All right, you ready?
Yes.
All right, the board is back in open session. At this time, we will hear a welcome by Blithe Park School Principal, Kaismera Gorman.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to Blithe. Busy, exciting time of the year. It's nice to see all of you. So just a couple of things that have been happening around here, as you know, because all of you experienced as well, is that we had our open house last week. In Blithe Park, we typically combine a lot of our events. It just seems to work for our community. So we also held our science fair. We had students that were showing us how they measured sound waves, and then we had other students that were measuring the amount of water in various types of foods and using a dehydrator. So it was really cool to see all the thoughts and innovation and ideas that the students put together. At that same time, in our auditorium, we had 70 of our early learners, and they put on a spring singing performance. So Ms. Jane Lawrence, our music teacher, put in some extra time, and she worked with the classroom teachers, and so they performed about six songs, and it was super cute, and we only had three criers. So, and we had one very cute kid who popped out underneath the drink right before, and it was really sweet. And then we also, I don't know if you know about Blithe, but we do this annual fifth grade tug-of-war. And so at the end of our open house, all the fifth graders gather out with their families and everyone else, you know, from the open house, and they do a tug-of-war competition. So we did a bunch of different types of teams, and then we get the parents involved at the end. So it's pretty fun. I did that one year and got myself pretty muddy. So it was a really, it was actually a very warm and sunny day, so it was beautiful. Our garden club is also starting, and so the students have been out doing some weeding, and then because they're new members, they have, are researching all the prairie plants because they are going to continue to tend and garden the plants throughout the summer. They set up a watering schedule, and they have keys to, you know, unlock the water with their parents, and they'll be able to come and do that throughout the summer. There's also a bench right behind there that they're going to be doing some artwork and painting. And then on May 17th, we are holding our annual ACES Walk, and ACES stands for All Children Exercising Simultaneously, and we're combining it this year with our Cardio Kids Run. And so we're doing a course around Kent. The police and the firemen will be assisting us and running with us. All the, the day before, everyone chocks the whole area and chocks all the sidewalks, and then we will do the run and the walk, and then gather back here. And we also have a very special art unveiling. Earlier this year, the students in all grades, early learners through fifth grade, worked with the Riverside Art Center, and they did just a variety of different clay figures, but it was like a spring scene, so like little caterpillars and ladybugs, and very child-friendly little, you know, artistic figures. But it has, you know, a very special purpose, and there's going to be an unveiling of that on May 17th. So if you would like to come by the morning of that day, you are more than welcome. But thanks again for being here, and that's it.
Thanks, Ms. Gorman. It's great to hear all these exciting things going on here at Blithe, what's still happening. Next item is, are there any changes to the agenda that any board member would like to propose?
Did you skip public comment?
Sorry, skip public comment? Sorry, public comment. If there's no public comment, then...
Skip it for a reason.
Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, we move on to the committee meetings. First committee meeting is education. Sherri?
I'm here from Pam Shaw, Director of Special Education, about funding for programs and services.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak about special education and funding programs and services. And with me, joining me to present tonight are Ellie Ambule, who is the Assistant Executive Director of Ladsy, soon to be Executive Director of Ladsy, and Brian Rigler, who is the Director of Business Services at Ladsy. Okay, so special education is part of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Sometimes you hear it referred to as IDEA. And with IDEA, school districts are required to provide free and appropriate education for children in the least restrictive environment. Typically, least restrictive environment means their home school. Appropriate supports and services are always determined by the IEP team. And the IEP team is the parent or the family, and then the school team. And we are to provide, as a school district, a continuum of services and supports for student ages three to 22, for our district, three through eighth grade, in District 96. So starting with our youngest learners, we have our Early Childhood Special Education Program, and this program serves children ages three to five. And some of the different areas of services that we can provide are speech itinerant services. That's where parents may bring their children to one of our elementary buildings to receive speech services once or twice a week, and all the, the amount of time is determined through the evaluation process and dependent on a child's needs. And then we have students who are blended in our early learners program. That is our general education setting that we are required to have, mandated to have for young children, as well as our kindergarten through eighth grade students. And so there are students with individualized education plans, or IEPs with special needs, who are blended in with general education students from the community who pay a tuition to attend our program. And then we also have the Early Childhood Special Education Classroom, which is a smaller classroom of only up to 10 children. The other classrooms range between 15 to 17 children, but the needs of the other children, they require a smaller structured setting for their services. And then we have some children within the district who also attend. Ladsy has a communication development classroom from early childhood, which tends to support children more on the autism spectrum. And then we have the Ladsy Phonological Program, which is just a couple of days a week. It's a very intense phonological speech program for children who have a very specific speech need in the phonological area. And typically, students in that program often are not even in the program for a full year. So they rotate through the program and often then come back and receive itinerant services in the district. So in kindergarten through eighth grade, we have, again, itinerant speech and language services, and we have hearing and vision itinerant services. Those are teacher services that are provided through the SACID and case cooperatives, and they have teachers that come to our district and provide specific services for students with hearing and vision impairments. And then we have our special education teacher support. We have services where the teachers push into the general education classroom. They deliver services to students in the classroom. Sometimes they pull students out and provide small group instruction, or sometimes one-to-one, but often small group. And then at Hauser, we also have some of the co-taught and supported classrooms at Hauser Junior High. Then we also have public day programs that some of our students attend, which are the Ladsy programs and the DuPage West Cook programs for vision and hearing impairment. And then we have private day programs. What we really try to have is our children in that itinerant through special education, those first three bullets up there. Those are the programs where we'd like to have our children in our district as much as possible. They are all programs within the district. And then to support students in their educational setting, we also have related services. We have speech and language services that are provided by our District 96 Speech and Language Pathologists. For fine motor, we contract with Ladsy. For occupational therapists, gross motor, we contract with Ladsy also for our physical therapists. And then we have students with emotional needs. We have some District 96 social workers, and some social workers provided by Ladsy. And the same is true with those emotional needs. Our psychologists also support those. We have some that are District 96 employees, and some, and one employee through Ladsy for psychologists. And then we have the assistive technology services that Ladsy provides. When we look at assistive technology for a communication device, or often something more to do with handwriting, or for a child with a physical impairment, other types of technology that they may need, they go through a whole evaluation process to help determine what tool will be the best for that student to use. And then we also have transportation that is provided by Ladsy through Grand Prairie Transit. And then some students also have more specific paraprofessional support in their IEPs. So all these related services help to support the child in their educational program, and the services are not just assigned. The services are determined through an evaluation process, and that evaluation process determines if there is a need in that area, and then minutes are determined by the need in order for them to read, to receive services. The only area that is provided for general education students as well would be social work. They serve general education students as well as students with IEPs, and psychologists also can help support that as well, too. So we do have the public day programs, and that's one of the programs I was talking about that is not housed, that is not part of the district programs, which are through Ladsy and DuPage West Cook and SACID. The Ladsy classrooms are housed in the member districts of the Ladsy Cooperative. For example, our classroom at Hollywood is a Ladsy Cooperative classroom. There are students from our district who attend there, and students from other districts as well. And so some of the different Ladsy classroom opportunities that we would have for students if they required that level of need, we have the Communication Development Class, again, support students with autism. We have Multi-Needs for students with significant intellectual disabilities, and then we have the Emotional Disabilities Classroom that Ladsy provides services for. And then DuPage West Cook has classes as well in SACID member districts, and they are for the deaf and hard of hearing impairment and self-contained programs for vision impairment and self-contained programming as well there. So this would be for students who need more than the vision and hearing itinerant can provide within our district, if they need a different type of teaching. Some students need how to learn to read Braille, and that setting works best, but we always do try to then bring students back to the district. And then the other setting that some students attend are private therapeutic day schools. These schools are for students whose needs cannot be met in the general education setting or even within a Ladsy program. Their needs require more services and more supports than we can provide in a public school setting. And as, you know, we mentioned the Ladsy and SACID and DuPage West Cook programs, those are all within public buildings as well, too. So they need very therapeutic, more specialized programs. And so these are typically access for students who have those more significant behavioral needs on top of some of their disabilities, there's challenging behaviors that require more therapeutic setting. So this is a breakdown, a percentage of students by area of disability, and I know it may be kind of difficult, I'm sure you can see a little bit easier on your iPads, but one of the specific learning disability tends to be one of the higher percentage areas in most districts for students for special education. But you'll notice developmental delay is also a very large category, and the reason for that is developmental delay is an area of eligibility that captures children ages three through nine years of age, up to their 10th birthday. So often when we have a young child, and it's difficult to determine exactly, you know, they're still young, they're still developing, they're still growing, and it's difficult, we know there are delays, but it's difficult to pinpoint exactly what that delay is. We look at the area of developmental delay, and they would need to have a delay in communication, fine motor, gross motor, some social emotional, problem-solving areas to look at that area. And then the others, I think, kind of speak for themselves. Autism is an area that tends to be growing over the years, and I have seen the growth even since I have been in the district here. The others tend to be a little bit lower. And then this is, when we look at that least restrictive environment or educational environments, this is how the students are served in various educational environments within District 96. So we really want to see most of our students be in that blue zone, where 80% or more of their day is in general education. That is our goal, that if all possible, that we push our services into the general education classroom rather than pull them out. We know at times we do need to pull them out in order to provide a little bit more intense services, but then we also go back and then try to support those services in the general education classroom. And then we do have about 40 to 70% of the day in general education is the next category, less than 40% of the day in general education, and then served in separate or private educational facilities is that last green pie of the area. When we look at less than 40% of the day in general education, that is our more very specific self-contained classrooms and probably includes most of our children that are in our Ladsy or SACID programs. And then these are the trends of percentage of students with disabilities in the educational environments. We always want to try to have everybody to the left of that, of that chart. We want our higher percentages to be in general education. That is our, our calling, to have children in the least restrictive environment and to have them in their home schools as much as possible with their general education peers. And Ellie's going to go first.
Thank you. So Pam did a little overview of the programs, and I'm shifting gears now into funding and kind of talking specifically about revenues and expenditures when it comes to special education, because it is a bit more complex and different than the rest of the educational world. How I broke this down was to talk about revenues, federal, state, and then to talk about expenditures, federal, state. So that's kind of the way this is organized, so we'll go ahead and go through it. At the federal level, as Pam mentioned, the IDEA grant is, the IDEA law is a federal title, entitlement, and that provides a significant amount of money from the federal government to all 50 states for the provision of services to students with special education needs. As Pam mentioned, special education is, is an entitlement, and we are, students are entitled to a free and appropriate public education, so that money is directed to schools to accommodate the need for that free provision of services. So IDEA is broken into several parts. The primary parts impacting an elementary school district are Part B and Part C. Part B being significantly larger than Part C, but because it covers K-8, and Part C is the preschool grant. The IDEA grant is based on your total district enrollment and your low-income enrollment in your district, and that's a formula that applies to all 50 states and is a very complex formula. There's not an easy breakdown. It was, a base amount was set back in, I think, the late 70s. It's been adjusted in the 80s and then the 90s. So there's been some adjustments to it. IDEA was impacted by sequestration a few years ago, so there's been a number of different impacts to the IDEA grant. But the, the main take-home points of that funding is that it is not dependent on how many kids you have enrolled in special education. It was important to the federal government, it's important to me, and Pam is special education directors, that we don't want to identify more kids to get more money. We really want to identify kids who need services. So that is actually a part of the law, that it is just based on district enrollment and not related to student numbers in special education. And it has some specific guidelines for use. If you're familiar with title grants, your Title I, your Title III, it can only be used to supplement and not supplant local expenditures. So it is on top of what you already can commit to special education at the local level. On top of that is what IDEA can provide. It cannot be used toward private tuition. IDEA can only be used for the services in the public, in the public sector. And we, we, meaning, as Brian and I are creating the grant, because Ladsy writes much of the IDEA grant, we avoid using it for personnel receiving TRS. There used to be a substantial TRS penalty in the state of Illinois for assigning IDEA dollars to special ed teachers or speech-language pathologists. It was a 40% penalty on top of the cost of the, whatever you put into the grant. That's reduced to 10%, but it's still a penalty, and so there are other ways that we can apply the IDEA grant to districts to offset your Ladsy bills. And so Brian looks each year to do that so that we can avoid having that penalty come into play. And then I just listed some specifics about District 96 IDEA dollars. You had $347,859 for Part B and $6541 for Part C in FY18. We have not received the FY19 allocations yet. We expect them many day now, but they are often late to arrive in the school year before we need to write the new grant for July 1. So we use, your IDEA dollars are used to directly offset Ladsy programming and purchase service costs for District 96 students. I'll go into that in a little bit more detail in a later slide. In terms of your IDEA dollars, the vast majority of those dollars flow through to Ladsy for our application towards the costs that you spend at Ladsy. A small portion is retained in District 96, and that is two and a half percent of your IDEA dollars are returned for professional development that Pam and the administration at District 96 coordinates for the provision of professional development regarding students with disabilities in your district. So if Pam wants to bring in somebody to speak about ADHD or strategies to address learning disabilities in the general education classroom, that's dollars that she can use towards that. I'm going to skip, in terms of your slides, down to Slide 4. So right there, because I think my slides, as I was looking at them, were a little bit out of order. I wanted to cover just an overview of services provided by Ladsy, and then go back to our, how IDEA offsets some of those uses that District 96 has. So there's really four primary areas that we provide services to all of our member districts, all 15 of them, but when thinking about that, we, we provide assessment and consultation services to, to the districts. So our consultation, Pam mentioned the assistive technology coming in to assess or consult on a student that has, having communication difficulties or difficulties accessing the curriculum in the classroom due to the means of access. I can't read the parent because it's too small, so we need to enlarge it. That would be a, a simple way of looking at assistive technology. I need to listen to a book instead of read it because I don't, my reading skills don't match my comprehension levels. Autism and behavioral consultation as well. We have behavioral and autism consultants that Pam can access. Those are things that are included as part of your membership fee to Ladsy, which we alternately call the assessment or the membership fee. And so if Pam needs a service, she fills out a form and submits it, and we assign it to somebody who will then come out and consult with the team, and that is not an extra charge to District 96 to access those services. As you're probably most familiar with, we have our programs that Pam did a great job of describing, as well as our purchase services that we provide to districts as needed. And, you know, one of those, one of the reasons for that purchase service and the numbers there is different districts want to approach the hiring of staff in different ways. Or you may not need a full-time whatever in your district. And a good example is physical therapy. So District 96 is, is small enough that you don't need a full-time physical therapist within your school district. So, so we provide a part-time person to you, and then we're able to assign that person part-time somewhere else, so we can hire somebody full-time and apply them where needed across the cooperative. And then the other area is just operations and maintenance. You know, some of this is just, we do have a headquarters. Your membership assessment, along with the other 14 districts, supports things like, you know, a roof or HVAC issue. We have a similar HVAC issue happening today in our district, in our headquarters as well. And so just the, the running of, of business. We also manage all your student and personnel claims. And so as I get into talking about state revenues and reimbursements, that's based all on information that Pam sends to Ladsy, and we coordinate and then submit to the state so that you are getting the correct reimbursement back from the state. So we have staff in our business office that are assigned to that task. And then administration, myself, Brian, are program coordinators who help support the programs and services provided. So we'll go back to Slide 2. Yep, that's it. Yep. And this kind of breaks down how we use IDEA revenue in detail for Ladsy with District 96. So you can see under that assessment, and that would be your membership fee, this, the, the cost for belonging to Ladsy, which is based upon your district enrollment, your percentage of district enrollment based upon all 15 districts, district enrollment. That's how that amount is figured. Brian, can I ask, answer more specific details about that, but it's based upon your district, your, your total district enrollment. Things that are included underneath that assessment, as I just mentioned, AT team, autism behavior, operations, maintenance, administration. You can see the gross expense that is assigned based on your percentage enrollment in, in Ladsy, the amount that we apply from IDEA funds to that gross expense, and then what your invoice amount winds up being. For purchase services, oh, you actually do have a full-time PT. I didn't see that. Okay. School psychologist is .6. So, so you see under purchase services, OT, PT, school psych, school social workers, one paraprofessional, that would be for a student in our Communication Development Program at Ladsy that needs a one-to-one aide, early childhood administration and early childhood evaluations. So you can see the total amount there. It is purposely these people, because we do not hit a TRS penalty with any of those people underneath those categories. We didn't talk about early childhood that much, but when a student turns two and a half, or a student aged three to five has a concern, a parent is concerned, a preschool teacher is concerned about the progress that they're making, they, they call Pam, and then Pam often will refer that student to Ladsy to do an early childhood evaluation. We have a team that does a transdisciplinary play-based assessment, and, and then creates that IEP, which Pam comes to that meeting, and then services are planned for that student if they're eligible. And so the way early childhood is being assessed moving forward is based on use as opposed to part of the assessment. Prior to this year, or prior to next year, I should say, early childhood was part of our assessment, so it was just based on your district enrollment as opposed to how much you used Ladsy for that. We have a wide range of use when it comes to early childhood evaluations in our 13 elementary districts. We have a district that has set up their own early childhood evaluation team, and so manages all their early childhood evaluations themselves. We have districts like 96 that send us some, 13% of our, or 11% of our total amount every year, or approximately, and we have districts that use us substantially more. They just have more students birthed to age five that are really needy and need, need a lot more support, just don't have the early intervention services that, that they, that they may need to, to not be at risk when they hit kindergarten. So you can see how that's broken down, how the IDEA is applied, and then you can also see how District 96 has accessed Ladsy this past year for, or this will actually be projected for next year for our tuition program. So 15 students within the Multi-Needs and CD programs, a couple of students in our emotional disabilities program. ED RAP is a service that we provide to our districts for students and families that need, that have a lot of intensive needs, where it's not just the student that's having issues, that there's a whole family dynamic. It may be because of low income, it may be because of, of a single-parent family situation, it may be a bad divorce happening, it may be just something impacting the family dynamic, where having an extra person come in to really facilitate connections for the family to the school and the family to the community. So a lot of the work our RAP services do is finding community services and resources for our families so that they can be a little bit more secure and more stable, so that then the student is more stable coming into the school environment. The FONO stands for that phonological program at the early childhood level, and ESY is our summer school program. And that is predominantly for our students that attend Ladsy programs. So your District 96 students that are in Multi-Needs, CD, or ED would be the ones referred to our extended school year program, which will be at Pleasantale this year.
Can I also do the other statements also from the district?
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so moving into state revenue, this one gets even more complex, because it was one-way this year, and as I'm sure you are all familiar with, evidence-based funding has changed special education reimbursement dramatically moving forward. So what I did was kind of present the world as it was for special education with some asterisks, saying, here's how the world's going to change for special education revenues moving forward. Fund A was a all-encompassing kind of formula. It's kind of where the vast majority of our students in any district go into that, go into that formula, and reimbursement is doled out from the state from these mandated categoricals. So this followed a very similar Fund A formula to IDEA. However, you'll see the asterisk, they've eliminated this fund moving forward, and it'll be rolled into evidence. it'll be rolled into evidence-based funding. Your general state aid will include dollars that were originally, or in the past, assigned to Fund A. Fund B remains. That is a private tuition fund, mandated categorical. So for any student who attends a private therapeutic school, I listed a few there that students at 96 have accessed in the past, and there are others out there. You pay initially that tuition cost at the outset. So they will send the bill to Pam, Pam approves it, it goes to the business office, you pay the bill. The following year, as the state is examining expenditures from the prior year, you receive a reimbursement back for anything over two times your per capita expenditure, operating per people expenditure. So I listed that there. It costs last year $13,598 for a District 96 student to be educated within District 96. So multiply that by two, that's what you are obligated to pay towards private tuition. Above that, the state reimburses that amount, usually to the full amount, although it's often prorated to some degree. So. Fund E is an orphanage fund, which is dedicated for students that are foster students or awards of the state. And then personnel is our next asterisk line. That was a rather large line item that we would receive, we meaning districts, because I was a district director, so I still think of it as a we. Ladsy receives a personnel grant for our staff, and as you see, it was $9,000 per 1.0 FTE-certified special ed staff. Multiply that times the amount of special ed teachers, social workers, school psychologists, speech pathologists that you have. It's a nice bit of revenue that you would receive each year, including amounts per paraprofessional also. So that was a claim that Ladsy would run through consultation with 96 each summer and submit to the state. We get the money back, and then the money would go directly to your FRIS account. So it would go directly into District 96's account at the state level. That has been not eliminated, but rolled into the evidence-based funding model as well. So that will appear within your general state aid monies that you get in the future. So while we still need to track the personnel for the state, they've asked us to still keep track of that figure for reporting purposes, that money will not be coming through any longer. Transportation is another claim. We've actually usually gotten most of our money for special education transportation back from, so the cost of transporting a student on Grand Prairie Transit is reimbursed back to the district. And Brian's actually been looking at ways to increase that claim this past year. And then summer school was usually a very small amount of money, meaning like $1,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. It was not a very significant amount of money, but that claim has also been rolled into evidence-based funding. So just wanted to kind of highlight that, because there are some pretty large changes that are happening that will impact the district moving forward. Looking specific.
Quick question about, so that when you say, on the first line, you said 85-15 formula, similar to IDEA. What does that mean exactly, similar to IDEA?
Sure. So the total pot of money that the federal government would assign to the state, and then the state deals out to districts, is complicated, but based upon a formula of saying, we're going to give money based on 85% of your total enrollment and 15% of your low-income enrollment. So again, it's a rather complicated, more descriptive formula. I'd be happy to gather that information. I've looked into it myself, and it's complicated, but that is, the point is, they want to recognize how large your school district is, but also recognize that low-income students factor heavily into special education often.
So if you, just to follow up on that, if you calculated the amount of money per student in a school district from the federal government, which for us looks like it's about $200 per student roughly, and you were to rank that by district, by the percentage of low-income students in the district, so we looked at the schools that belong to the Ladsy co-op.
Sure.
So we're at $200 per student.
Where are you getting that $200 from?
340,000 divided by 1,700, roughly. Is that right?
Sure.
Which seems like actually a very small amount of money compared to the numbers we're seeing here.
Yeah.
If you looked at that number for other districts, what do you see then? I think what I'm hearing from you is that the districts that have a larger percentage of low-income students than we do will be getting more money.
Yes.
And per student.
Yes.
And the districts that have a lower percentage of low-income students will be getting less money.
Larger districts get more money, districts with larger percentages of low-income students.
So but by per student, it would be essentially just ranked on the percentage of low-income students.
I believe so.
Okay.
But you are getting into the more complicated math that I would want to sit down and really analyze, but yes, that is my understanding.
Okay.
And not mine. That's why I brought Brian. So moving forward into some specifics, I just literally went on to the state website. I mentioned FRIS, that's a, you can do a FRIS inquiry and find out what your mandated categorical reimbursements are from the state. So you can see what you receive for FY '17 and what's happening in FY '18 based on the evidence-based funding that went into place. So, you know, I don't, you know, I noted that EBF comes here, I just kind of included that for your information. And it's usually a year behind as well, so it's a little bit hard to gather. So FY '17 is going to represent what was happening in the district in FY '16, because as Pam and I were looking at it, she was going, wow, we had a lot of transportation in FY '16. I don't remember that, but then you go back to FY '16, you had a significant higher number of students in private facilities. That bumps up your transportation costs. And so then it made sense of, oh, yeah, we were transporting a lot of kids, now we're transporting less kids, and that's good for kids, because that means they're coming back to closer to their home-school community, but it changes your reimbursement. So just a few other revenues that you receive. I mentioned the 2.5%. Oh, yep. Sure.
Well, I was just noting that on your previous slide, where you're saying the things that are moved to EBF, that they add up to, for fiscal '17, they add up to significantly less than what we appear to be receiving in evidence-based funding.
There is more to evidence-based funding than just those mandated categoricals. So it's also your general state aid that you're receiving. And that will then get into complicated math that I don't quite understand of how the state is assigning based on the level of your school and, you know, the tier and those sort of things. So that's the numbers that have been presented publicly at the state level. So, yeah, I see that discrepancy for sure, and it looks like some things, you know, the total at the bottom, just to be clear, represents the ones that are still, you're still receiving and the evidence-based funding. But, yeah, there's other things in that general state aid.
So I guess I'm wondering then, is there any way to break that out to get an idea about, you know, net gain or net loss from those other categories?
I can't tell, I can't tell from, I don't know.
So we know our general state aid number.
Basically, everything should be at least the same.
Yeah, you're not supposed, it's hold harmless, so you're not going to get less than you did in the past, but I don't know, I can't speak to how much more you're going to get.
We're not, we are not in a position to get more. So we, the hold harmless amount is the amount that we believe we will continue to receive. And that speaks to the adequacy target that we communicated about.
Okay, so then other revenues. I mentioned the 2.5% of professional development dollars that is kept at District 96 for professional development activities. There's also this proportionate share dollars, and for FY '18, it was close to $6,000. These are services that the federal government mandates be allocated towards students within District 96 boundaries, students who attend school within District 96 boundaries. They, an important point is they can.
They attend a private parochial school.
Yes, they attend, I'm sorry, thank you, Martha. So the private parochial school is located within District 96 boundaries or their home-school. So it's a bit of a complicated formula. Again, this one I understand a lot better because I've had to do a lot of work in this particular area. But the IDEA grant is based on your district enrollment, and that will include, that can include the parochial schools that reside within your district. And that's how the funding is allocated. It's not allocated based on where you pay your property taxes to. So a student can live in Chicago, attend a parochial school in District 96, and they are entitled to part of your IDEA dollars for that. Now, it's a very small amount, and it's an amount that Pam actually has a meeting every year or two with any interested parties to say, here's the dollars that we have, and here's how they can be applied to services towards students with disabilities. And it depends from district and director to director how they decide to allocate those dollars, but again, for you.
The meeting is scheduled in a few weeks. The meeting with private schools, Tom, St. Mary's, and then Pam's or home-school, we typically provide speech services as that is the one service that we're supposed to extend it with as a discussion we build with the students most.
And that is fairly typical for elementary districts to provide those speech services. But some districts have a significantly higher amount if they have, I came from a district this past year that had poor high schools that were parochial schools within our district boundaries, and that we had a significant amount of money that we needed to allocate. Medicaid is a pretty significant revenue for District 96 as well. And this is, we're able to claim services for students who are low-income and eligible for Medicaid who have disabilities. So if a speech therapist works with a student directly who has a speech language disability and is eligible for Medicaid, she can record that time, claim that time, and then we receive money back. We, meaning District 96, receives money back directly. That is money that goes directly to District 96 to be applied to special education programming as you see that.
Can I add some real quick, I've been working with our provider, the same provider that you use, and one thing that we've never done in the past, none of our member districts or Ladsy is, those students who are receiving support services, Medicaid support services those days, their transportation is also claimable at almost $25 a day. So we are starting to, we're going to retroit from the beginning of the school year, we're sending all the attendance sheets from Grand Prairie Transit to our Medicaid fee-for-service provider, which you guys use as well, and they will automatically apply those claims to your districts, so that revenue should be coming up in the near future as well.
And finally, Ladsy rental, you receive some revenue from us that is for hosting a classroom. So you've been gracious enough to host the classroom at Hollywood, and we are so appreciative of that. And for that, we allocate $10,000 per room that's rented, and then $13 per average daily enrollment for a student. So if a student's there for the whole year, then you would get $1,300, and then it's prorated based on the attendance. It winds up, based on our student enrollment, being about $20,000 of total revenue, and that is assessed to the program. So it's, if you have students attending the program, then you're a little bit paying yourself for that money. But if you don't have students attending, then you are getting that revenue from other districts that are allocated that. So. Okay, move into the expense side of things. You know, obviously personnel, as is true in the world of school districts everywhere, is the largest expense that US District 96 sees in the world of special ed that we at Ladsy see. We are primarily a personnel organization. So teachers, pathologists, social work, psych, paras, administrators. Other expenses that you incur, that private tuition I mentioned, that where you get that bill, it's usually a monthly bill that you pay a rate per day on, and then you get that reimbursement long after the fact from the state. And then special transportation, the bills for Grand Prairie, again, that you get reimbursement back for. And then on the final slide, I just included, I literally took this off your budget, I created this slide, so this is the one where I'm going to defer to others to provide more expertise to it, but I took it, I pulled their budget off of your website and kind of looked at that. The line item said, "apply very significantly to special education." I know a question came up today, or recently, about whether those Ladsy costs are built into these costs. That actually is a different line item that I wasn't able to locate on your budget, but so that is the cost to Ladsy, I don't believe, Martha, and that's, I think we came to that conclusion, is separate from this amount. But your mandated categorical reimbursement that you receive, your Medicaid revenue that you receive, those things, those are items that do offset these amounts. And the only other thing I just wanted to reference is that included in your packet that you received was a preliminary budget breakdown. And it's awful tiny, so I didn't put it up on a slide, and it goes into a lot more detail than what I provided. I took from this sheet in order to create some of my spreadsheets, but it just shows you the, you know, the breakdown of how District 96 accesses Ladsy and how they use Ladsy. Really briefly, you'll notice at the bottom, this blue box with indirect costs and restructuring cost shift. One of my tasks that I was given as I came into Ladsy this year was to examine ways that we could restructure how costs are allocated at Ladsy to districts to address some equity issues that were coming up from our member districts. And that relates specifically to the idea that our assessment was based on your district enrollment, and that automatically meant that the larger the district, the more you paid to our Ladsy assessment. And where that's a bit counterintuitive is that our larger districts tend to have a little bit more capacity to serve the students with special needs. And that's certainly true of when you think of Lyons Township High School, they have over 4,000 students. They don't have any Ladsy programs. We provide some purchase services towards them and some other supports. But I think from our larger districts who are saying, hang on, we don't, you know, is this really fair? Because a really small district needs you more, is accessing you more, and you're paying the least amount towards our overall assessments. So Brian and I partnered together with Sherri Support, as well as, you know, some others on the directing board, to examine different ways of approaching that. And the model that we developed and was approved by the directing board takes a look at kind of basically creating an administrative overhead to our purchase services and programs. So taking some of the costs that had always been in the membership assessment and saying, not all of that should be in the membership assessment. Actually, when I think about our program coordinator for school psychology and professional development, she does, she does work for all of our districts, but she also spends a lot of her time working with a school psychologist. So should, so a portion of her salary should be assessed to districts that purchase our school psychologists. And so that's done on an FTE basis, so the more you purchase, the more you're going to pay. We truly tried to make it a, if you're going to access us more, you may need to pay a little bit more overhead to cover those costs. So that's a very brief overview of that. Martha's heard a lot more about it. So anyway, I will stop now and let Pam and I answer any questions that you have.
I have a question on Slide 10. Can I go back to 10?
Uh-oh. Which, we don't have the numbers.
That's it, that's it, right there. I noticed there aren't any numbers for this current calendar year. Can you tell me about what's happening now?
Sure. So this year, I did write some of it down, because again, ISBE always looks at things a couple of years in the rear, so I'll take a look at that. So our numbers right now, private day, we have 12 students in private day and 20 in public day. We had, for private day, we had four students who were evaluated, entered their evaluation, and their needs by the IEP team were determined that they required private day, and we had two move into the district. So those numbers increased. And for our Ladsy programs too, we had three move in requiring Ladsy or SAS programs. So those numbers are always.
Can you give me a percentage comparison? Because you're giving me wrong numbers. Can you tell me about what?
I don't have the percentages for you right now.
Can you give those to us?
Sure. I could look and try to get those for you.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, that there's an increase, but it's hard to compare when they're wrong numbers versus percentages. Thank you.
Just have a couple more questions on the expense side.
Sure.
So thanks, first of all, for putting us all together, it's very helpful. So you have, there's two tables that have the expenses. One is the Ladsy detail, which I think you have about 1.6 million total, and then net of IDEA, it's 1.25 million.
Right.
And then there's also, at the end of the presentation, you have the local expenses, which is 5 million roughly. So the sum of those two is 6.2 million. Is that, is that all of the special education expenses that we incur as a district? I mean, does that include, you mentioned transportation, does that include the transportation cost? Because I don't see that.
It's not going to be all-inclusive. And again, that's because I didn't, when I was creating this, for instance, I didn't pull from administrative.
to be able to pull that information. So I don't, I don't believe this reflects, the last slide, the special ed local expenses reflects all the costs, the local costs that District 96 has. And I'm sure that's not difficult to put together. The Ladsy breakdown is-
Is complete.
Is complete, yes.
Would it be possible-
Special education transportation, Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe is reimbursed at approximately 80% or, so we do get reimbursed back for special education transportation.
Right, I see that, I see that in the, in the revenue side, I see that revenue, but I don't see any expense on the expense side. So I'm wondering, is it possible to actually sort of add, look at anything we might have missed, like administrative cost or transportation, or I don't know, there's legal expenses that are associated with special ed-
Right.
Probably not in there. Is it possible to get a sort of a complete list of everything that might not be in there so we have a sort of a complete overview?
I think a lot of it, I mean, a lot of the Ladsy stuff is there.
No, I'm not, yeah, so I'm not talking about Ladsy. More question for our-
Just looking through my head.
Do that. Okay.
Yeah, and so, you know, also, like, I included social work here as a line item because a lot of social work time is spent on students with IEPs, but not all of it.
Right.
So how Pam and-
Yeah, that's difficult to determine that out.
It's a tricky formula, but some are very clear and some are not as clear. So, but I will leave that to Rob and Pam and Martha put together.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful. And then, just on the, on the revenue side, it looks like you've got the 340,000, 350,000 from IDEA, and then from the state, you had a couple million dollars. But that included the, 1.8 million or something, that included the general state aid, and you're not sure about how much that general state aid is.
Yeah, they don't, that I've been able to find, I haven't seen a general state aid amount which says, "This part is personnel and this part is summer school and this part is..."
Well, just to sort of, but if we assume all of that is going to special education, assume 100% of it.
So I think this year, because of the new change in evidence-based funding, they, from what I've heard, research I've done, is they, they put that money in general state aid this year. However, that's because they didn't have an account code and a new line item to call it the base funding minimum, which I think in your first account, there'll be a line for general state aid next year, and now all of that stuff in evidence-based funding base. So that will be broken out separately next year from what I-
In subsequent years, okay.
But this year was that kind of happened extremely fast for everyone, and they just threw it in the general state aid.
So if you go back to then last year's number, let's just take that as a baseline. I think you said it was 1.1, was it? 1.1 million or something like that for 2017?
Yes.
Plus the IDEA money, that's 1.5. So it looks like, roughly speaking, if our expenditures are $6 million or somewhat more than that, we're getting reimbursed for about a quarter of that amount, basically, from either the state or the federal government. And the rest of it is local costs.
Local expenses, public, property taxes.
Okay.
And just one thing I want to mention, when I go back, Sherri, and look at those percentages for this year, it may be a little off from the numbers I shared with you right now when you look at it, because all these numbers are based on the December 1 count. So I will need to go back to our December 1 count in order to it, for it to look.
Yeah, halfway is good.
So in terms of the restructuring that you mentioned, and I'm guessing as well, District 96 compared, being relatively on the smaller side comparing to some of the larger districts, and I think I've seen that in other documents, that our expenses for Ladsy are going up. Is that correct?
Do you have that information? I think 96 was actually not a-
I don't have egghead permission, but if you could maybe 10 seconds, I could probably give you a quick-
We're really close. We're very close. It's not a dramatic shift. There were some districts where there was a dramatic shift of savings from before the restructure to after. There were several districts that had a dramatic shift increase. Yours was much more like pretty flat.
Yeah, ours was pretty neutral.
When we say dramatic, we're talking about less than 3%. I mean, it's dramatic because we highly value-
We feel it's dramatic because it goes up, but yeah.
But there are some districts that spend $3 million with Ladsy and their bill is going up $80,000 because of the restructuring alone. You guys, if I recall, were very-
I think under, under a percentage, yeah, less than 1%.
I seem to recall there was some increase. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but there was some. Actually, you guys have a higher kind of enrollment than some of our other districts, so you could be saving quite a bit on the assessment. Last year, this year, we billed you $200,000 gross expense for your assessment. Next year, we're proposing or estimating $92,000.
Right.
So a big decrease in your membership assessment, increase in some of the indirect costs, and you add a couple students in there as well. But it was pretty, pretty, pretty close.
Okay.
I have one question. Do we still have a, I'll call it, a large percentage of our Ladsy classroom students from D96? Because I remember we did have a significant number last year. Is that still the case?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Do we know, I may?
I think there may be one or six or seven kids in the classroom.
And one or two are from other districts, yeah.
Yeah. Majority of the students are in D96.
Yeah, that's what was last year.
Stay pretty much the same. I don't know if that will be the same for next year, though, because it, there would be age-level grouping, and so that may look different for next year.
I'm just going to throw a plug in there, too. So every classroom that we rent, we pay the district $10,000 plus $1,300 for every 1.08 student, even if it's your own student. So it is a good little revenue source. We're always short on classrooms, so it's a plug in there.
It's tricky for us because we're short on space.
I know.
But it's important, yeah.
Brian, based on the lack of change in our total Ladsy bill, would you say that, does that let one say that we're using an average amount of services? Or is that, am I wrong in making that assumption?
I mean, you guys are purchasing, you know, about eight purchase, like, support services from us, a total of eight people, and you guys have, gosh, I mean, almost 20, a little bit over 20 kids, 25 kids with us. So I think it's really average, and I think why it shows that you guys are using us properly and we're billing for it properly is when we did that restructuring, it kind of did balance out. There were some smaller districts that were, that went up, you know, $60,000 because they just, their district size didn't match up for their usage. And your guys' district size is matching up with your usage at Ladsy compared to the other districts.
So Brian, I was able to locate a document from November. So that was when the restructuring was just being sort of initially discussed. The variance was 16,172 with a variance decrease of 1.07%.
There you go.
So like we said- Those numbers have changed some. That was November. Since then, we've had Pam make recommendations for what she needs next year for District 96 students from Ladsy and-
That was also comparing to this current year's budget, what I gave you is next year's budget with health increases.
Yeah, this, what we gave you is a more accurate estimation of what your bill will be for next year.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any more questions?
No, this is, Sherri, this is very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, thank you, Pam. Thank you, Brian. And everybody from Ladsy, I mean, you did the work. We're just listening. I'll pass it on.
So Rich is not here, so I'll just ask Mr. Holmes to maybe review the tentative budget update.
Okay, so you have a 15-page tentative budget packet, and it contains historical data, the tentative budget for next year and for additional years of projections. Before I go any further, I just want to point out that it is a fluid document. This is as of April, and some changes may come as we find out what our property taxes are going to get and other various changes. And then, so if you want to, if you look at pages three and six of the document, you'll see that salaries and benefits are the biggest cost driver, and those are mostly driven by the collective bargaining agreements. And I used 3% as the, as a conservative increase on that. And then all other increases, I presume, would be at the CPI of the last two years, which is 2.1. And then, you, how are you going to pay for this? Well, the revenues, as you can see on page two and six, the biggest revenue sources are property taxes. And as you know, the Riverside District 96 is pretty well built up, so most of that will come from CPI increases, which I assumed going forward would be 2.1%. And so then you have salaries going up, salaries and benefits going up 3%, but revenue is only going up 2.1%. So how are you going to pay for that? And one of the ways you could pay for that is attrition. So you've got six certified staff retiring at the end of this year and three non-certified. And then the other ways, how do you reduce the cost, is by judicious spending. So when I worked with, when I saw the budgets from the principals, they, they all look at their budgets very carefully, and they're only asking for expenditures that they will need, that will help their students. And then when I look, when I spoke to and work with, with Merrill, Merrill's proposing a $200,000 decrease in materials and a $50,000 decrease in purchase services because the one-time curriculum adoption is going to be eliminated next year. And as you saw Pam, from Pam's demonstration, that she's working very diligently with Ladsy to make sure that the district is charged properly and is getting the best possible services. And then if you look at Don Tofano's presentation last week, he worked very diligently with the tech steering committee and set up some very thoughtful purchase cycles for classroom technologies. And then, like I said, principals such as Casmira were very diligent in their presentations for budgets. And then as far as capital is concerned, I added the blithe roof project replacement for next year. I did not add the Ames project at this point. But please note that I, the $3.5 million loan from working cash was, to transportation, was paid back. So there's $3.5 million in working cash that could be used for projects. And next year, the $2.4 million loan from the operation maintenance fund will be paid back by the transportation fund, so that money could be used for projects. So these funds could be used for Ames projects and other ones. And then finally, I just wanted to point out that the administrative cap went up 9%, which is above the 5% threshold. That's because the CSBO salary was added to the cap. So at the next meeting in May, the, the board will pass a resolution to publish, to publicly notify the public that they will be doing administrative cap amendment at the June, I think, was it the June 20th board meeting? And last year, I think it was a 16% increase in the administrative cap, where the board did the same resolution. Are there any questions?
So just a big takeaway, it looks to me like from what you have here is that similar to what you showed us last time, revenues are kind of flat, the expenses are going up, and for the next year or two, we're going to be slightly positive without considering any new capital expenditures, other than what you've assumed here for the ratio and blithe roof. And then after that, you show us basically the year after next, starting to go deficit spending, and that then accumulates rapidly after that. It's kind of what you're showing here.
If things are unchanged, that is correct.
If things are unchanged, basically.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Holmes? No, thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll take over for Rich here. The next item is facilities advisory committee update. Last Friday, we had our first Ames Visioning Committee meeting. We met at Ames with Carrie and three of her staff and a large group of Ames teachers and administrators. And it was a, it was a really interesting, slightly stressful for me, I don't know why, but really interesting three hours. First of all, I just want to mention that the people that were there were incredibly engaged and enthusiastic, and, I mean, they, they wouldn't stop talking and offering ideas. It was a really engaged group. I was really impressed. I also thought it was neat to note that one of the teachers who was involved is also a District 96 resident, so we had that perspective. I noted, I found out that two of the people in the room were also school board members on different, you know, in other towns. So that was a really, it was neat to have that perspective as well. So basically, what we did at the meeting, we didn't talk about space. And Carrie was very clear that when we started to talk about space, that we were not to be talking about space. So the first meeting was what she followed, like, the whole form follows function. So what we were talking about was who, who are the people that use Ames? How is it used? How, how do teachers teach? How do they, what is their, the best modes of learning for the students? So it was just a lot of, a lot of interesting stuff about how teachers use their classrooms, how they use the, you know, I'm using the word space, we weren't supposed to, how they use the space, how they move. Martha was there, she could add anything else, but I, basically, we, we did three hours of talking about who's there, you know, teachers, community members, students, how the spaces use, the challenges of the population that uses the school and what we need to talk about. It was just really neat to listen to the teachers talk about how they teach. And through that, you could see the architects were really picking up on, you know, the space side of it, although we weren't talking about space. And it was neat to see them list out the things that were really important to them, like what defines the Ames community and like, and the way they teach and learn. And it was, I thought, very informative.
Yeah, I would echo the same. It was, you know, as I said, the architects very specifically challenged the group not to say, you know, she said, "You think you're invited here to come talk about whether or not we should build two rooms or four rooms or whatever?" And she said, "You're really here to talk about student learning and what, not just students, but what the community needs. You know, how often is the building used by the community? Who uses it and for what? And how is it when they come here?" And it was, I just agree with Linda, it was, the group was really engaged, the group was really thoughtful. It really speaks to that idea of, you know, changing a school structure for the future. And I know this group has talked about that when we look back at when buildings were renovated, when they were added on to, and we look back sort of at the long history of District 96, kind of have that moment of like, this is really an opportunity here, a moment here to really, be really thoughtful, really insightful, and make decisions about where, where we ought to go.
Right, and so we will reconvene in, I believe, a week or so.
Yeah, next week.
I don't remember, but that is when the word "space" will allow to be used, and we will be, you know, following up. I'm not exactly sure how, but following up. But I do think, I mean, I just thought it was really interesting, as not an educator nor an architect, to be in the room to hear the questions, like, just asking about curriculum and how does that, like, explain what that curriculum is like, like, what are the students doing? What, you know, so, and even the teachers were even like, "Oh, I can't believe they're asking these kinds of questions." So they also asked about like, you know, like, if the teachers were talking about things that they, they would love to incorporate moving forward. And it was just a really good brainstorm session, and I, I personally got a lot out of it, and I think our architects did as well. And I thought it was a really good starting point to get like, the pulse of what Ames is like. And I think the people who were selected to be participating were incredibly helpful and engaged, so it was exciting to move forward.
Yeah.
Any questions? Because I could really answer.
Martha, can you add something about how some of the Ames community, staff was added? How were those selected?
So we picked a teacher per grade level. So it was kindergarten through fifth grade, one for each grade level. And then we had a special education teacher represented and a music teacher. So we kind of wanted to represent the sort of non-traditional classroom users. And then Todd Gierman is the principal, was also there. The, really, Todd and I kind of picked the group and by intention and by design, picked people that have been there a really long time, people that are very new to Ames, perhaps people that are more traditional in their approach, and perhaps those that are more innovative in their approach. So it was really, I think, a very balanced group. I think what I would say is, it was a very student-centered group. Of course, that's what our teachers are, but really, again, really spoke to, and that was really the challenge and the request from the architect team, too. It was like, "Talk to us about kids, talk to us about kids and student learning." And that was really valuable, and I thought the teachers did a great job with that. But it was a very balanced, I mean, there are teachers that are new this year, and there are teachers that have been there-
For years, yeah.
15, 20, perhaps, yeah, years.
You were just talking about curriculum for the most part for the three hours, is that kind of-
No, that was a smaller part. It was more so-
It was more so who's using the space, how the space is being used, the models of learning that are used at Ames. I mean, curriculum was a small part, but it was definitely a piece of it, but, I mean, a lot of it was just, I don't know how to describe it in a way like
But it depends what you mean by curriculum. They literally wanted us to list every curriculum tool, right? So the Math in Focus, the Ready Gen, every tool used by special education students. Like they created a comprehensive list of the curriculum tools. So I think sometimes when we think about curriculum, we think about those tools, those things we've purchased. But they also talked a lot about how students learn. So one of the examples, you know, that one of the teachers brought that was, I thought, very insightful is how children, we want them to make choices every day. So, right, so I can read with my small group, I can go read with my teacher, I can go and put, you know, headphones on and listen to a story, or I can go and work with word building tiles. And so all of that, in that description, you realize that takes space, right? And that's how I use, teachers use a classroom. But it was, so sort of both the what and the how of curriculum.
Yeah.
And how they want things to feel, so I think there was an inspirational, so people talked about they want the school to feel welcoming, they want the school to feel very inclusive. You know, so some of those, what I would call sort of more of those soft or inspirational terms were also very much discussed. You know, what does it feel like to say you want your school to feel welcoming? What does that mean?
Yeah.
People are challenged to think about those things.
The one thing I found, like I said, I'm not an educator, so the one thing I found very interesting was when they were talking about like how their classrooms look. So, and there's teachers, like you said, were so different, like, well, you walk into my classroom and my classroom is noise, like, and I think they described as like productive noise or something, you know, where, you know, and then other teachers were like, ah, you know, I don't know. It was just really neat to see all the different variations of learning and teaching and how space is used. And it really did come down to like a really, I don't know, just a very collaborative process that I felt really did inform the architects in, you know, what's going on at Ames? Like, what happens here?
So like, so this came up at the meeting as an example, and I think it's a challenge, but it's something I've heard from probably all five of our principals, is schools as a gathering place, schools as a community, so is there a place to gather your full school community? You don't do that often, but it's really nice when you can do it. So that was something that, something we have to problem solve for. I don't know that we can do it, but we need to think about it.
When the teachers were speaking, was there a difference kind of as the ages of the kids increased, as the grade levels went? Or was it more unique to the teachers and how they use space? Or is there kind of a continuum of the younger kids need to have more mobility?
So I would say probably from a kindergarten perspective, there was some conversation about just play spaces, you know? But everybody talked about play and everybody talked about movement and everybody talked about choice, you know? So, so this idea that you don't just sit at your desk, even if you're a fifth grader compared to a first grader, you don't just sit at your desk or at a small table all day, you're really, you know, I think teachers do a great job, and that's why I also had that more of like, this is why we need to listen to the teachers, right? They're the ones living between those walls every day and working with children. Yeah, there were, those themes felt very common regardless of the grade level. Movement, choice, flexibility, welcoming, inclusive. Like I think if I were to sort of try to gather up the terms that sort of came up and popped up, they recorded a lot of it, they kept a very careful Google Doc, so I think we'll have a very good record of all of it as we move forward. That's part of their process, that's part of their methodology.
And that document will continue to evolve through these additional meetings.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I guess it was mentioned at one, we were soliciting from the community ideas for how the community would use the facility more. I think we've talked in the past in general, the District 96 facilities aren't used to the fullest extent by the community, do we have, I mean, what were there, any big recommendations behind that? Are there any big changes or any thoughts that came out of that?
I think this was more of an inventory, so, you know, they certainly talked about like parks and recreation, but then Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and before and after care. So even their list became more comprehensive than I think if I had created the list. So it wasn't so much now how will they use it, what do they need? It was really, let's make sure we're attentive to the groups that use a school.
Yeah, I don't think there was any like recommendations of how we can better use the facilities for community use. I think it was just at this point, talking about like, I mean, we were even talking about like the PTA has no space to store anything or hold a meeting when they need to, you know? So all the groups that are using it were talked about and it was talked, I mean, Parks and Rec does use Ames for basketball and things like that during the week, so those were all mentioned. I'm not sure any like, I don't think we're at the point of recommend like that.
Sure. Any other questions? All right, thanks, that was interesting, very interesting, thank you. So next we move on to the policy committee, Dan.
Okay, I will defer to Martha for the first item.
Sure, and I can defer to Pam Shaw for it. So we have a behavior intervention committee that meets regularly to review, per the requirements of the policy, to review this with a team that looks specifically at misconduct by students with disabilities, making sure that our policies are appropriate.
The ISB guidelines for students with disabilities and that we have appropriate information to parents and that we can discuss this.
So it's an annual requirement, so this is our, yeah.
Okay, let's see, and on the second item, Martha and I, as well as Jeff, we've had a lot of discussions in the interim since our initial discussion, the potential for changing the attendance policy. I think we wanted to try to put in emphasis on making the language clearer and more reflective of how the policy is being implemented. You know, to that end, when we've talked about, you know, attendance areas, it's not necessarily something that reflects how the policy as it stands now has been implemented in the past completely. So I think we've had some drafts here that are in front of the board members. And in particular, I think one of the options, we talk about something that we haven't emphasized as much in the past of having the transfer within the district as opposed to a waiting list option, which hasn't been used to the fullest extent. Or, you know, really, Martha, what were your words on that?
Well, so I think the idea is that perhaps what families are really, rather than being put on a waiting list, if let's say you didn't, your child wasn't attending the school of your preference, is that rather than keeping a waiting list, it's really a request for a transfer. Transfer that, you know, doesn't mean that that could also be granted immediately, but that, again, because some families may put themselves on a waiting list two years later, they don't want to be on that list anymore, they, you know, acclimated to the school that they're currently enrolled in. So, but if they did on a certain year want to go to a different school, then it's a request for a transfer. So I think that we felt that that was a way that really simplified by getting really to the same goal of being able to have communication and honor or acknowledge families that may want a change of school.
Do they like first come or whoever applied first or?
I think it would be based on, you know, the enrollment, right? So again, in my two years' time, we haven't looked at any long lists of families.
Usually just a few, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, no, we've also had a lot of discussion and some early, early dry test runs of the algorithm that we've spoken about in the past that we're trying to model after a district down in California. Again, with the idea that in using such an algorithm or implementing the policy in such a way that we're trying to efficiently allocate the resources that are available to us, but then also provide options to students that are efficient to their commute and their distance from the school. And so I think, you know, after our dry runs, it's, the results that we're seeing, I guess, in the early going is that it's fairly similar to what we see in our current allocation. There are some changes, but, Jeff, can you speak a little more to the algorithm?
Yeah, so as Dan said, this district has been running the algorithm just in the background to see what it looks like. And if you work, if you run the algorithm where they have been running it without any sort of constraint, one of the big questions is constraints on school capacity. And if you just ignore that, you know, constraint and pretend that each school can accommodate as many students as actually live close to it, then you get, it looks, what's interesting to me is that it looks like Blithe would have, you know, even right now with enrollment, 28 students, just looking at the, you know?
In kindergarten.
In kindergarten.
Right.
Which is already sort of more than a one-section school, just by closest distance. So what's also interesting is the sheer number, I think Martha can address this, but the number of students we have registered for kindergarten already is very large, I think, relative to what we've had in the past at this time. So we assume we'll pick up more students over the summer, which we usually do.
So we have 145 children currently in kindergarten, we have 143 registered to attend kindergarten next school year. So I was joking, like, does that mean our communication's gotten better and families are all registered, enrolled? Or is it that's going to be a much larger class and families aren't here yet? So, and that's always one of our knowns that we address and try to certainly address through policy also. We name a June 30th timeframe in the policy, that's something that's been in our current policy, that we would let families know, would say just after, on, I can look back, June 30th, in terms of the school that they would attend for kindergarten.
So
Honor before June 30th.
So Dan, is it fair to say that we basically have sort of two questions before us right now? One is the first page, the policy, the student assignment policy and the wording for that? And then, then the second thing is the wording for the exhibit that goes along with that policy? Sort of proposals have been made for changes in both of those, right? That's what I'm basically.
Correct, yes. All right, any questions?
Tell me about the wording policy, the second paragraph, like the goal of assigning students to schools near their homes. You know, he initially, I don't know, it was just last year, talked about shortest walking distance and that's much more specific. Just a question I have, are you looking at, when you say near your home?
That is the algorithm, and so that's, that's
Right, I'm just wondering, does the policy, should it reflect that or should it be more broad? I don't know.
From what I can tell, what the California school does, and I think what our lawyer says is the policy should be sort of general.
General.
And just say we're following this sort of methodology and without getting into the minutia.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I know we had a talk, like, kind of figure out how to avoid it.
We talked about, we did talk very specifically about this issue of near, near your home as opposed to closest to your home, which is really the question.
Like what if you're in between Ames and Blithe, what does that mean or across the street or, you know?
Because of our, and help me understand, because I think I do, that you, if we work this algorithm as our tool, really in the background, and our goal is to balance enrollments where we feel that perhaps they come out of balance, which may mean more kids going to Blithe, that there are children that might be slightly closer
Right.
To central that we might recommend go to Blithe, they're still near, right?
Right, I know, because it says while remaining vigilant of the school's capacity. I get it.
But is it actually closer or is it just near?
I don't know.
And I think near is probably more accurate.
I think that's more what we're trying to get at, right? Because we're not going to guarantee people, what we don't want to do is guarantee that you will be going to the one that is, you know?
Closest.
I mean, they're, you know, around the lame's eye.
It indicates as a goal.
The current policy, it kind of implies that, but the way it's put into practice and just by necessity, it's never really reflected that.
Right, right.
Yeah, in fact, the current boundaries are not even the boundaries you would draw if you're trying to draw the closest.
No, they would, no.
They're kind of drawn in a different way.
Yeah. I think the heart of the policy is that we want kids to go to a school near their home, you know? So while making sure we're using capacity everywhere.
And that's really, we talked about sort of running a sample of how the algorithm might look and might work. And so that's where I think just running it yesterday and today put seven more children at Blithe because it's nearer or closer to their homes. But if you left, if you looked at current attendance center boundaries, they might be central.
So
So do you want, so on this one, the actual policy, not the exhibit, it says, you know, there's two sections, it says or, is there?
That's two different samples of the two different, like you have a preference for the language.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is there any like background of why these two different ones? Or how did we come to this? Or are we supposed to be choosing today?
Discussing.
Discussing today.
I mean, Dan, do you want to take that one or do I? Me too?
Well, I think, you know, just given the discussions amongst Jeff, Martha and myself, we were distilling, we were coming down to two unique variations, I guess, that at the end of the day, we wanted to present to the board to provide the most, the two best options that we were coming up with.
Okay.
Just as an idea, again, of providing flexibility and with the idea that this is what we've discussed, this is what we've come to, and, you know, if, how, we'll see how the board likes the various languages.
Right, I mean, I guess I, I think I prefer the second formulation rather than the first. I think it's clear and says what we essentially want to say. And the only difference is that, is that second paragraph is the only difference.
Yeah, I was actually gonna say, I feel like the first, half of the first sentence of the first one could actually be included in the second one to, like, the first sentence, school-specific attendance areas have been replaced with a district-wide attendance area.
That's when we went back and forth was because we, it's, it's, is it not, is it not really true that we have a district-wide attendance area? What does that mean, I guess, is the question, you know? It's district-wide, it's not really district-wide attendance area, because at the end of the day, you're going to some school or other, right? So it seemed a little bit vague.
I guess my concern with the second, the second one, the second paragraph of the second one, is that given this, given like sort of what we're looking at for next year and kindergarten size, we're going to be asking for increases to, I mean, I was hoping that this would at least reduce the need for like making an exception to the rule and that unless we change their policy about class sizes, I mean, I would think that because we're tying it to that policy, I'm thinking we need to change that policy where we remove the number of students that we have and try to keep it a low class size, or we stick with, we go with the first one, because I think we're sort of, again, we're going to be, again, here in six months or so, asking for an exception to that policy.
What about, I think we were talking about class size policy, that's not necessarily covered as a part of this discussion.
No, I know, but
But it's reference.
It's reference.
Okay. I think the idea that there was, I think the original idea, which I think it still should be in that, in that sentence, is that we want to assign schools near their homes in, still taking into account the capacity of each school, basically. So I think we have to say something about the capacity of the schools. That's a sort of a decision that superintendent has to make, is say, well, this school has this much space and this school has this much space.
I think the second one is lacking that, what you just said.
Well, I agree, that should be in there, in my view.
Yeah, if you're gonna move anything, that needs to be there, if you're gonna uphold that, that second, remaining vigilant to the capacity, I mean.
Right, capacity should be in there.
That's the one part that was missing, that's why I didn't like the second one first.
And then the other thing I think that might be in there is the capacity of the school and the, as well as the sort of what's mentioned in the exhibit, which is the using classroom space effectively across the district. We don't want to have one school that has, you know, so really crowded and another school that's, you know, not crowded. So I think those are those three ideas that somehow maybe should be in there.
I think we need a hybrid of these.
Well, and again, that was kind of the idea behind presenting them both to you and I mean, looking back at it and thinking of, I think the first one was based a little more on the recommendations from the attorneys that came back with, but that, I don't know that the members of the committee had a good feel for, didn't feel that it was, it, I think referenced a little bit back to the current policy a little too much, which was again, something we felt was confusing and needed some clarification.
Right.
But if there's some aspects of that that we need to bring into the second, that's definitely
One possibility that I thought might be, would do what we want is to have something like the superintendent or that designation will establish an unbiased enrollment process and objective assignment criteria that assigns students to schools near their homes, so that's the same as the original, the other two, subject to the constraints on each school's capacity, so that's point number one. so that's point number one. The effective use of classroom space across the district, so that's getting the idea, we want to sort of equalize across schools, and then, and the district's class size policy. Now, you raised the point, which is a valid point, which is, we kind of ignore the class size policy anyway, right?
Right.
We override that constantly. I don't know what to say about that, they are linked to some degree.
They are, I guess, it just seems like we have this policy that we don't adhere to.
Right.
I mean, I think, I mean, I know that's not part of the discussion tonight, but I think we, I don't think.
It's that we want to, though.
We sometimes want to acknowledge, we at least want to acknowledge that, yes, we have a class, we have a class size policy, we'd like to satisfy to the extent we can, maybe we can't, but acknowledging that as a goal, I think maybe is a.
And student numbers, because it's important to say what we think is valuable. In a classroom. We're gonna do our best to get there. I don't know. I think if you jump it up to a crazy number, then it's.
Well, no, right.
I know what you're saying.
There's a difference between we'll do our best, we have to, this is a.
Yeah, I'm not sure it says we have to.
Or may, I'm sorry, or maybe we could put something in there, I mean, I guess the thing is, I'm just looking at, like, maybe Central's gonna have maybe 20 kids per class, Blythe will have 25, Hollywood will have 23. I think if we're gonna put something, I think it needs to be, the class sizes need to be equitable across the schools. I mean, I'm just saying that, that if we're gonna do something, I mean, because I feel sometimes the schools, there's like, some schools have smaller classroom sizes, some schools have larger classroom sizes. I think the schools, if we're gonna do this, needs to be, like, if, I'm just doing like, simple math.
Right.
If there's 100 students, we have four school, I mean, four class sizes, it's like my first student.
I don't like that arbitrary, though. I wouldn't move a Hollywood student over to Blythe, just to keep the numbers even, you know? I would want to keep those people where they want to be, like.
Well, I think what you're bringing up is this issue that I think, in my two years here.
Yeah.
The hardest transfers to make are Hollywood students.
That's right. So what do you do?
To Central, which maybe as distance goes, but it's.
Do you bring them across first, or do you keep them where you want them?
Right, no, and I understand that, I mean, that's, you've got First Avenue, but then I look at Hollywood, and just always gonna have the largest classroom size, and I don't think that's necessarily fair.
How do you know it's always gonna have the largest size, though?
Well, they're gonna be the landlocked, because they're, no one's gonna cross First Avenue.
Right, nobody's gonna.
No, but they're, they're the most.
Well, they're the most likely to get the higher class, because if you have somebody in the Blythe or Ames, like, the whole point of this new policy is to.
You could obliterate them easily, right?
Yeah, right, is to make that, that, so, say there's only 24 kids at Blythe at the end of the summer, well, the easiest thing might be to move four of the closest ones to Ames, to Ames, or to Central. So, so basically, while I really like this policy, and I like where we're going, I think what you mentioned is really where the one hiccup is, is that we're talking about this, yep, there's Hollywood, so we're not really talking about.
I know.
So, so we have to acknowledge that, that this policy, or in doing the algorithm, is really, if Hollywood wasn't in the picture, it'd be a very.
I guess, I would say that goes even further than that, which is that this is nothing to do with the algorithm, this is, this is a problem with the current policy, it's a policy, it's a problem with any policy, because it's a factual, the factual fact that they're geographically sort of just.
Exactly, no, and it's not even a policy thing, it's literally geography, it's the geographical situation of what we have.
So it comes down to, what do we want to do? Do we want to say, okay, Hollywood's got 25 kids, all right, five of them are going to Central, or do we want to say, yeah, it's kind of a tough thing to cross First Avenue, so maybe 25 is okay? I mean, that's the choice we have to make, and I don't think there's like a right answer there to say.
There's that too, but there's also, and we've heard this before, is that.
The thing, it's, the issue is also with the single-section schools, because we've heard from the principals, Kizmir and Kim, that the single-section schools do better when the class sizes are a little bit higher.
It's a little bit more social flexibility.
Because of the social interaction with the kids, so it's not a.
Sort of.
There's no magic number.
That's a good point, which is.
Across the district. And it's also, when, when there's one extra child at a single district school, the policy's almost instantaneously violated, whereas if there's an extra student at Ames or Central, the averages don't change as much. So, I mean, part of it's just what we have to work with.
Right.
And I, we haven't come up with a good answer on Hollywood and First Avenue.
Maybe there should be a part of the policy that talks about discretion of the principals to create the best environment for the family.
Right, so if we leave the policy sort of very general like this, and just talk about the things that we are trying to do, which is get the kids near a school as close to them, to the extent possible, subject constraints on school, you know, capacity, classroom, you know, classroom space across the district, and, you know, class size policy, which, yes, is not ever exactly adhered to, but it is our goal, we leave it general like that, that does give some, I think, discretion to the administration to say, in this particular circumstance, then we should sort of be doing this this year, you know, which I think is kind of, we have to make those judgment policies, not we would, the administration.
They do.
I would think, back to what David was saying, just briefly, like, the class size policy, I think, is something that would have to be possibly reviewed in light with this, because the fact that we are space constrained, and a public school who has to take children who live in this district, having an exact number in a policy is a little difficult to follow. I don't know, I've seen other policies, and I don't know how we feel about it.
Yeah, how many others just don't have specific?
The most I've seen don't have specific numbers, they say.
So we did some research on it, then I'd have to pull that back up.
I remember hearing it, but I've forgotten.
Yeah, I would say most, so we looked at, again, sort of our neighboring districts, most do not have a written policy, they tend to have guidelines around class size, and they might have a policy that says, we'll look to, you know, sort of achieve a successful learning environment for all children. So it's, I think we are a rare case that we put actual numbers in a policy.
You've also made the point in the past that this notion of classroom size is a little bit antiquated as well, because it goes back to this idea of a single teacher with a certain set of students, and nowadays, you got, you know, we've heard tonight, you got all these other people coming in and out, and it's not just one teacher with this group of kids, right?
No, like, at Central, they go to someone for social studies, they go to someone else for English, and they move to their room, and.
But we were talking about how a reading specialist comes in, the math interventionist comes in, a special education teacher comes in, and so you really start to talk about what's effective instruction.
Right.
What I find interesting right now is the evidence-based funding formula is coming out with a recommended class size of 20 for elementary students. So it's very much in keeping with our policy, and that, so I think there's an interesting moment right now, when school districts have been, school districts have been perhaps taking more leeway, needing more opportunity to create that just-right learning environment for children. What is that just-right number continues to be a very interesting question in education, to educators and in education, to school boards, to parents.
I just think we need to, as we're thinking about revising this, just also have to think, like, is it solving, and I'm a proponent of this, I think we need to move, change, but is it solving the tough, like, does it help us decide when there's 25 kids in Hollywood, what are, what are, what the plan is?
No.
And I think that's maybe what David was kind of getting to, is that, while I think this policy is actually in the right direction, I think there's still some questions about, I think, we want to, we want the policy to make the decisions more transparent and obvious, and I'm not sure it does that yet. I don't know how to do that.
I'd be in favor of revisiting the other one, and maybe we could talk about the other class size policy and see.
I like this policy, don't get me wrong, and I think it's definitely the right way to go. I'm just thinking that, now, I realize about the evidence-based model, we're coming down to 20, so what are we gonna do? If we can, like, conceivably accommodate, meet that with 20 kids, are we gonna basically say, okay, because of evidence funding, we're gonna now move?
But the other thing I'll remind everybody is, that evidence-based funding's not a mandate.
Right.
It's based on kind of that effectiveness.
Right, but, I mean, these are, these, no one's gonna be happy moving, I mean, and I understand, I mean, I remember when I moved, first, we first moved here, we knew that our kid, my, our daughter, might not go to Hollywood, and I was like, oh geez, we gotta, this is very real. I mean, no one wants to just move, I totally get that, but the same token, it has to be, we have to sort of somehow make it so it's like transparent, open, equitable, so that, you know, if we do have to move, like, two, or, I mean, we're at 24 right now in Hollywood, if we do have to move, like, two or three kids from Hollywood.
And that's what the, that's what the algorithm will do for you. It's like, if you decide, here's the limit.
Right.
Right.
Then it'll say, well, then take these.
Take these two kids.
The closest, yeah.
Right, so, right, but that's the, the algorithm can't tell you to do that, you have to decide.
You have to.
Here we have to decide, so I agree with that.
Your next job is to write another algorithm to tell us when to do it.
Which is like, what do you want to do? Yeah, I personally am not sold on this idea that 20 is a magic number, I just do not believe it, I do not believe that fundamentally, that you have 20, 23, I just don't, I just do not believe that.
Right, and I think in past discussions, prior to the idea of the 20 number coming up from evidence-based funding, I think that what was said was that the literature was not necessarily clear on that point, and what, I think, trying to find something to reference that, for the original policy of 20, I think we had to reach back several decades, was that it?
Yeah, so there's this Tennessee Star study that still sort of holds true as perhaps one of the sort of best research pieces on classes, which talked about small class size, small being around 20. So I think, I think the question this board has asked, or is it, I think it's even lower, is it even?
It's 15, right.
But is 21 so different than 20? Is night, does, do children, when there's only 19, are they at an advantage? So I think, I think we are talking about 25 to 30, but we're talking about relatively small. So I think it gets into that issue of exactness, too, and for a family to stay at Hollywood and not cross First Avenue and have 21 or 22, but right now, we're looking at 24 students currently enrolled in what would be considered a Hollywood attendance area, which is probably.
To the degree of transparency.
Yeah, I mean, you see us having time.
Go ahead. Well, I was gonna say, to the idea of transparency, again, I think we're removing the language about the attendance areas, which, again, I think that was misleading at best, and for the most part, really not possible to adhere to. So from that aspect, I think we replace it with the idea that, you know, yes, we have the district-wide attendance area, but at the same time, our goal is to make it neighbors, make the schools neighborhood, and have kids go to schools that are close.
So, as a follow-up to what you just said, Dan, and also to address the base point, what if, what if we got rid of, get rid of the district's class size policy, and just reference.
The second piece, yeah.
Just reference school's capacity, and the effective use of class space across the district. That will kind of kick the problem back to school capacity, and then that's where maybe we can say, we can maybe update the policy, the class size policy, and say, the capacity is, you know, this many spots per, per class, basically. And that takes it out of this policy, and makes it, you know, makes it a sort of a, because this is a little bit orthogonal, sort of a little bit of an orthogonal issue. And then we can talk about the class size policy as sort of a separate issue.
I think that has merit, I think we're gonna have to have more discussion about it, and I now have three, three thoughts. One is, what David and Dan just said is absolutely true, and the, these hard and fast boundaries never really worked in the first place, but the whole point of them was to get us to neighborhood schools, and that's really why people, I think that's a big reason this town, this district is desirable, you know that your kids are going to be able to walk to school, they're not gonna go on the bus, and you're going to be with your friends, or you're gonna be with your neighbors, and so that builds community. Getting to the class size policy issue, when we talk about the Tennessee study, has education and services we provide with our poll-ins and poll-outs, and gifted and special ed, they probably didn't really exist at the time the study was done. So the study may not have as much validity as we once thought. Number three, and this is, the evidence-based funding model is not designed to ideally help wealthy districts. The whole point of evidence-based funding, and this, I'll mention this next time, is to address inequities in funding, and bring up low-funded schools. It is not at all meant to provide a great educational environment. It's, the whole point is to address funding.
Yeah.
And state funding specifically, and I think we need to understand better, and I know Martha's looking at that, in terms of what this is really gonna mean five years down the road. We know we're supposed to not take a hit next year, but state funding is a mess, and so we know that's gonna be, I wouldn't put a lot of stock, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I wouldn't put a lot of stock in what evidence-based funding says in terms of class size.
The reason the word evidence is in the word evidence-based funding is because it sounds good. Who could be against evidence-based funding? Evidence, it's evidence. But if you look at the evidence, it's completely, you know, it's not evidence, it's just.
Well, it's certainly not giving money to gifted education, and it's certainly not giving the state any money to help us with our class sizes.
Yeah, I had a long discussion with.
We need to make our decisions, because we already are.
Well, yeah.
I had a long discussion with a gentleman who was a big proponent of evidence-based funding. He's an advocate and essentially a lobbyist for it, and his, his intents are good, but it's not about, it's about funding. It's about inequities in funding, it's not about.
He ranked 50th of all states in the disparity between the wealthy districts, and like, like, we are the worst, we're the most unequal.
But that's entirely based on state funding, it doesn't include the whole pot.
And I guess that's our, I mean, this is something that always comes up every time we talk about property, I mean, I know I'm meaning a lot of a little tangent here, but the way state funds education here is deplorable. I mean.
Correct.
It's just absolutely deplorable, the way they do it, because it causes segregation, and then we get evidence-based funding that makes it sound good, but it really doesn't do. I mean, it just moves numbers around, makes things more complicated, gets really complicated formulas that no one seems to understand, and then.
It's, to me, I haven't spent enough time with the formula to understand it, but that formula still relies heavily on the contributions of wealthier districts to their own schools. It's not a, it's trying to reduce inequities, but it's, it's nowhere, it's nowhere near addressing the real issue, which is, the state just doesn't.
I agree, so, coming back to the, coming back to the policy here, I guess.
As we can talk about the state of education and funding in Illinois.
Is it a hybrid, or something?
Well, what I'm, what I'm sort of gonna propose is, is what if, what if we had something like the superintendent designation, establish an unbiased enrollment process and objective assignment criteria, that assigns students to schools near their homes, everyone likes that, right? That part of it, right?
What if someone asks, what's this objective criteria?
The, in fact, it's, it's gonna be an algorithm, it's gonna be this algorithm, I think.
As long as you're okay to tell people where to look.
But I think that's, that's gonna come in the second part, but just, that thing. But, so, so the first part of the sentence is okay, everyone agrees with that, and then, subject to constraints on each school's capacity, and the effective use of classroom space across the district, leave out class size policy, because that could be then sort of factored into, what is the capacity of school? Is everyone okay with something along that line?
No, I don't like that.
Yes.
Okay, does that sound good to you, Dan?
It does.
Okay.
And then keep the first sentence about permitting to neighborhood.
Right, exactly, exactly, right.
Yes.
Okay, then, and then, and then the second part is, I don't know if, Dan, you wanted to talk about this, is that the, the actual exhibit, the exhibit. Kindergarten student assignment, that's the one, that's the key one that's sort of changing. Exhibit E, or E1, or whatever that is.
E.
I was gonna say, I think one of the key pieces of communication that I know the board wants to make clear, I want to make clear, is this issue of children staying with siblings, right? So siblings move together, stay together, so that really is what this kindergarten and student assignment, it talks about a time period, and this is very similar to our other one, and then, once assigned to a school, a student will be able to remain in that school through fifth grade. All parents will be notified of school assignment on or before June 30th, and then it talks in the middle section there, I'm kind of jumping around, but siblings, with older siblings in attendance, will be assigned to the same school unless otherwise requested by a parent or guardian. So I think that was one of the questions we thought might be coming up in the community, was that when we talked about this student assignment policy, that we were gonna maybe change children already assigned, already seated, already in attendance, and that's not what we're doing here at all. It's really about kindergarten and newly enrolled students. So this is very similar, other than it removes that whole waitlist, which seems just kind of, in practice, not, not perhaps the best practice, that it's really an issue of transferring if a family really wanted, even after a year or two, to be reassigned, and sometimes it's because they want to go back to the school that they thought they might be going to. Could be a Hollywood family, for example. Some families have, in my short time here, have come and just asked for a transfer, sometimes for like, a social reason for their child, too. So that's why I think it's under sort of the discretion of the superintendent, the team to really think about individual student needs when requested by a parent, when a transfer's requested by a parent. When a transfer's requested by a parent.
So I've got one minor question about this, which is, the old policy was explicit about older siblings. Said students with older siblings in attendance the following school year will be assigned to that school first. That means that if they've always said we was going to be in the same elementary school, then they get to go there. Like your situation, Cheryl. Your, your older daughter's Hauser.
Yeah.
Your younger daughter is going to enroll in kindergarten.
I only have one.
Under the old, under the, yeah.
I didn't do it.
Under the, under the old policy, your younger daughter would not be kind of grandfathered in.
Right.
Because your older daughter's no longer at Central, she's at Hauser. That does, so that situation does arise. And I think, Dan, you have maybe the similar situation.
I mean, it's the same campus, the way you tell the mom was driving around.
Right, so.
I mean, it's the same drop off.
For you and for Hauser, but for other schools, well, Blight it might not be.
No, I mean for Central.
Okay, for Central, right. So I guess the question I have, so the new, the new wording is students will be assigned to the same school, be assigned to the same school unless otherwise requested by the parents. It doesn't make that case just clear. It doesn't say, it doesn't act clear what you do in that case. I sort of, I prefer the old policy because the reason for that policy is because, okay, you got some kids going there already, you should continue to go there. But if your kids are already out of schools already, or at Hauser or high school, then that shouldn't give you any sort of special treatments, you know what I'm saying? You guys understand that?
I, I, I follow, yeah. I, I, I agree completely. I wasn't aware that that aspect of it was taken out.
Does it say it anywhere?
Here's the old wording right here.
Can you read it?
The old wording was, students with older siblings in attendance the following school year will be assigned to that school first.
In attendance to that.
So if your, if your daughter, older daughter was saying third grade, she would be still at Central. And you say, ah, your, your, your younger daughter would automatically.
No, I don't see a like that yet.
Right, but, so that's the, it does, it's sort of, but if your older daughter's out of the school, then you wouldn't get, be automatically assigned to that.
But to say older siblings in attendance.
It needs to indicate that they're going to be continuing.
In like elementary school attendance.
It's the following school year.
So they're going to, they, you can't have a kid who's about to be in kindergarten and a kid who's about to graduate fifth grade because you no longer have that time.
So the, the older way is clearer on that. I agree.
So if you're an al, like an alumni of the elementary school, it doesn't mean that.
Yeah, correct.
So are people okay with retaining the older language there?
I would.
Only if the Central-Hauser people, I mean, because those, I know those families are going to say why.
But that would, you know. It would sort of indicate that if you have a child at Hauser, you get to go to Central.
Which is a.
No, that's not.
That's what we don't want to do.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, some people, I, I walk, but some people that drive are going to want to drop off at this same place.
I mean, that's the same for anybody who has a Hauser student.
I know.
To any of the schools.
And I guess, and I guess my thing with that.
Or the older sibling walks the other one. I have no idea.
I guess my, my concern with that though is, all our kids are eventually going to go to Hauser.
Yeah, I know.
It's going to be the one who's going to.
I know, I just.
Become someone's desire.
I know of families that I'm not, I'm not there yet, that have the older sibling walk or the older sibling picks up the other one at Central. Because, and they wait outside for the Hauser kid.
But I think you need to turn that around and say, for the parent who has a kid going to Blight and Hauser.
I know, I know.
We shouldn't be showing a favoritism towards.
I don't know if it's favoritism, it's just, that's how the kid goes to school.
So basically that argues for retaining the, the old language base.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I currently, I don't experience it, but I know that there are older ones that do that.
So retain that old language.
I finally found it, no. Thank you.
And then can we see like the rewrites next time, maybe?
And then the other question I have is more substantive, which is, which is. If we fall, if we're deciding to use the algorithm, that's making a choice about how we're going to assign students. But it is a definite choice there. It's a definite algorithm. There are other possible algorithms you could come up with. It's not the only one you could imagine. I think we have to be explicit about what we're doing. We have to say, this algorithm assigns students to the closest school, subject to the constraints on school capacity. And, and what it does, it does that by minimizing the total walking distance. That much we have to say.
And we have to put that.
So we decide to change that somewhere later down the road, like, then we need to sort of, but that I think has to be explicit somewhere.
I think the total walking distance is the important part.
That's actually.
Did we hear back from the attorneys in terms of differences in language for exhibit versus attachment or?
So exhibit and administrative procedures are really essentially the same thing. What she really talked about is sometimes policies have an exhibit that really describes an administrative procedure. I think because how we do it really matters. Some, some how we do it perhaps is maybe not, not that interesting to the, to the public. That's my, my paraphrase. So I think the question is, is not about the exhibits, it's about using the terminology and information about the algorithm. So like I went back and looked at the California school district that we've talked about that has a similar policy. I think what they do is they do a really nice job on their website with a lot of good communication. That's why I have this, like proposed frequently asked questions. I think there's a lot of ways that you can absolutely explain to people the tool we're currently using. Part of what our attorney is saying is, what if you decided not to do it that way in three years? Like you found, like you still want to have this unbiased, objective criteria that really speaks to school's capacity, that speaks to class size and speaks to children being educated near their homes to preserve the neighborhood school concept. But the tool, if we can explain, I absolutely think we should explain it. I don't know that we should explain it in policy or in the exhibit, but.
I agree with the policy and agree with what you're saying, but the only, the only caveat I would make is that in the procedure, I think we should say what it is we're doing. We're minimizing total walking distance subject to constraints. Because even if three years from now, you say, oh, you know what, I want to minimize that, I want to minimize the total walking distance square, whatever, something else. Then you, in three years, you've changed the wording basically, so people know what you're doing then.
It's a board decision to change it, so I'm not.
Why can't we just link it to an exhibit? Like you click on it and you link it, it talks about the algorithm.
I mean, we could do, I, I would almost want to be more generic and say distance instead of walking distance. Because it's essentially the same. If we did like time, time to walk, like number of feet, what have you. I think we should just keep it distance because somebody, I don't like it. It takes forever to walk. What would be.
I like it, walking distance.
I mean, as opposed to driving distance, because some roads are one-way and all that kind of stuff, so.
And sometimes you're sitting there for half an hour waiting for preschool to get out, yeah.
I was going to say, walking distance, I think, needs to be defined in one of the frequently asked questions or something about what do you mean by walking distance? Because it would be different than driving distance.
That's right.
Honestly, I can, you know, if I'm walking, if I'm a kid and I'm walking, I'm going to cut through somewhere. And it's not walking, you know, that, it's walking the direct route to your school. You know, because if, with our curvy streets too, cutting through is clearly quicker, you know what I mean? So I think.
So I think the algorithm, we're not talking about cutting through neighbors' backyards.
No, but I mean, seriously, there are some places, like, like if you're on the Central-Hauser campus, sometimes if you cut through something, you don't have to go all the way this way.
Well, that's the negative bonus cut through, but I don't want to define that.
I think that's the question, do you want to define the algorithm in the exhibit, right? Do you, or do you want to define the algorithm somewhere else?
I don't think you need to sort of define the algorithm so much as to say what it is the algorithm is doing.
What are the criteria?
It's to say, it's getting the walking distances from Google. It's Google saying, what's the walking distance from point A to point B? And then, once it knows the walking distances, it minimizes the total walking. So that's all we have to say. We don't have to say, it does this by calling this routine or that routine, you know what I'm saying?
I would be fine if it just says minimizing walking distance and then walking, the definition of walking distance is like a FAQ.
That's fine, yeah.
I mean, I don't think, I personally don't think you have to say, as defined by Google, but I don't think you need to do that. I think that can be like, just outside on the website.
I guess that by referencing Google, it comes back to we're referencing essentially a, you know, a third party or something that's publicly available information.
Yes.
That could be explained in the FAQ.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't think in the policy, I think we just need to say.
You just say minimize walking distance.
Yes.
Right, and if we want to do an FAQ, then we can say what we're using at the time, but I don't.
Because then you can adjust.
Because we might not.
Might use something else later.
That's right. It's fine.
Yeah, like one of the questions is, how does the algorithm work to assign students? You know, so I think that's, I mean, it's really interesting. I think it's, if it becomes the tool that really works for us, I think we want to be as transparent as possible.
Yeah, no, I think the FAQ is a great idea.
Who runs the algorithm?
Don and Jonathan right now, so. So are we saying something about the algorithm in, so that's what the question, right, before the board about the.
I think we should say, I think everyone agrees, we should say.
Minimize walking distance somewhere.
In exhibit maybe. The algorithm minimizes total walking distance, subject to constraints. But we are not going to say.
I'm saying on the website at school, you just build a click on that and it just takes you to the, here's what we're using.
Like I found on the California website that I was looking at, a lot of clicks took you back to this explanation. You know, was school assignment, school enrollment, frequently asked, you know, and so, and I, I think it was, it's a really good example of. This, this becomes a very important piece of information to lots of families when you're moving here, when you're enrolling your children for the first time. So I think we can certainly do that. Do you want to say, maintain the neighborhood school concept by minimizing walking distance? Like, do you want to, do you want, just?
You could do it that way.
Well, it's weird.
Maybe we should think about, a little bit about how we want to phrase that exactly, where, where in the exhibit maybe. Bring it back to the board next time maybe.
Sounds good.
I think this information should be shared with the Realtors too. I'm not kidding. Because a lot of the families move in, and I would ask my friend, oh, where are you going? And they said, oh, they told me I'm going, the Realtor told me I'm going here. And sometimes it was not correct, you know, so we want to make sure everyone's getting.
Or they could be in a, where I live, where I'm on the border of three schools and any of them are pretty equidistant from me.
Right, or it was, I don't know, answer.
So we would probably be the ones that who are shifted around if maybe.
Absolutely agree about that.
Done?
Okay.
Anything else, Dan?
Ah, I think we've had enough.
I second that.
Future meeting dates are May 16th, regular business at 7:00 PM at Hauser, June 6th, committee of the whole, 7:00 PM at Hauser. June 20th, regular business, 7:00 PM at Hauser, and July 4th, committee of the whole is canceled. If there's no regular business, then.